Just one, yeah, I know, we've got to watch a YouTube video on the proper way to hit the gap. We're still learning training. Thank you everybody and welcome to tonight's meeting of the committee of the whole community development. And we're growing agenda, but it's going to be able to get it all accomplished in short order. I guess first and foremost, I'd like to see if I approve of the agenda, which was Spotify this afternoon. Sorry, reported by yeah, I'm going to need a motion first. You move by the move by deputy Mary Dilabon, seconded by Council of Wadysmail. Okay, call order out there. Okay, great. Okay, looking for any disclosure, pecuniary interests or the general nature thereof? Does anybody have any
Somebody?
All right. You, all right, business arriving from the previous committee from the minutes of anything. Is there any comments or questions or anything on the previous minutes? Okay, all right. So that was very quick first four done. We're about to enter into the number five, which is delegation and presentations. We have two tonight. I just figured it was a good opportunity now to go through some of the rules, just to make sure that we have, we have two sides of a similar argument today, and we just want to make sure that we're, we're clear on, on, on what the expectation is for a delegation perspective. So, you know, delegations, I'm just going to read it right over the file itself. Delegations shall not address members directly without permission. Interrupt any speaker or action of the members of any other person addressing the members. They'll not display or having their possession any picket signs and everything. Please stand in further with that. I don't see any, so this is a good sign because I'm talking about that one. It has happened, I've seen it, so anyways. And council members, council chambers or any other place that council, sorry, I'm just finishing that sentence. Please speak, do not speak disrespectfully to any person. Do not use offensive words. Please do not disobey any decision of the providing officer, that being myself. And nor enter into any cross debates with other delegations, presenters, that that's one that's particularly of interest for today as a portion, right? So. And, and I think the other thing that I have to add as well, just on my own side. We did for both delegations today, give a little bit of flexibility. We usually have a firm date when we, from time where we don't accept delegations, but we had one of them, the other one came up shortly. And after what came up after that, and it was, I just feel that council is here, gets our committee is here to listen. And so, so we wanted to make sure we got the full scope of both sides of, or two sides of this equation. And, and you know, we want to also make sure that people are, we're listening. So, you know, there's, there's concerns in the area and then we want to make sure we listen to them and see if we can do the help. So I want to get that to make sure that's clear. I also want to highlight that you're speaking to us, you know, think to each other, but I think that was kind of already insinuating, but there's that and, but I do, I do recommend, I mean, I'm very much a, and this is not necessarily exactly the case, but I love thy neighbor kind of person. And, you know, if there's concerns in a certain area, if the people who are involved in it can get together and try and solve some things, I think that's a great thing for a community perspective as well. The delegation is, is a presentation, not those questions to, to think many, so, you know, come prepared to do that, and they will at the end of that, reach the delegations, have a bit of a discussion with, with you, if we have any questions, we'll bring it up to the delegations at the time. And we can go through that. And then the last but not least is, you have 10 minutes to present, so, and it doesn't have to take 10 minutes, but we just allow that maximum time range so that we can try and my phone will do it, I'll set a timer for 10 minutes, so that's it. Okay, fair enough. So. So with that, that's all I had from that perspective. So, that being said, so Ms. Christine Moore in the traffic on Legion Way, you want to come up and, or say, you can sit back wherever you want.
And I was going to ask you here.
Okay, so it depends on the
My name is Steve Martin. I am a resident of twice a day, so older pile, I had them each way with my dog to walk down the same lines. It is beautiful. Beautiful people, those school divers started coming down to the dive site as they started climbing as early as 6:00 AM and we created vehicles in this zone. Nine people, seven divers on the property. They speed down to the site. Most days in vegan remain until the end of September. There are anywhere in two and two dozen vehicles on the area inside of the garage shop. On eastward, the picnic table, there's a turn around spot. They're not in the tree room. On all weekends, there can be as many, three or four dozen vehicles at, at any of the sites. That's a minimum of four diving divers. Usually there are at least two people per vehicle. So you do not. All has become safety issue. The divers race down to the dive site well over the boat's speed limit. They come around the canteen that is there. As we know, they have been down there. The canteen hides the place charter where it's going with. Pedestrians on Legion Way walking past the canteen. Can't be seen by vehicles traveling east or west. It's difficult for the drivers to really stop when they are traveling fast. This is a safety. I have asked the school driver many times, please slow down. I am Frank Bone and I speak French very well. This surprises him because they are back and the ignorance of the English language. And that's happened over and over. I will address the name, I didn't know. Because most people don't know his name. And what sort of heavy Frankie, you know, you're going to get and we'll talk, you know, you guys need to slow down, we will remove these cables. I said, well, so I asked Sean's one in each of the classes. Then I asked. And it puts them off a bit, because it surprises them. Many divers are rude and laugh. And they think it's funny that they use this earlier. I have more than a few times reviewed verbal off agent, we became the Quebec divers in residence. Again, safety issue of verbal off agent has worked. The Quebec divers bring no tourism dollars to our community, more specifically to our Thank you, however, leaving the trash. Bio waste, empty off all the better containers and a great lack of respect for our community and new world. They do not even slow down on that street during our candidate. There would be no value loss of in, of motor tourism being impacted in our area, again, in Cardinal itself. It'd be to, be needed for access to the site is not going to be. These people bring nothing to our community. They do not bring any money to our community. And as we know, tourism, they should be bringing, they don't. They don't went through the canteen. And they purchased low to no batteries of liquid aviation. We pay taxes and very little ones are unable to enjoy the Legion Way because these people bear a lot of weight. I do not want to give out walking Legion Way during the summer months because of the dog's behavior. The wrecking con stola is home by the province of Ontario. We are allowed towards the council. You're allowed to barbel in access to the site because of the safety issue. I email her and she's been part of the problem and was told. Again, the township belongs Legion Way and has to stop traffic from heading down to the site. I've also been in contact with St. Ontario's different. They report the problems also. Most of ours still aren't back from the mother grubs in the area. They are presented our concerns at a general meeting that was called in April first. And I got the bottom back with them, you know. Um, yeah, I think we saw hard on people walking the dogs and playing with their children. There are only citizens who enjoy the lockdown with the dive site. It is heartbreaking to see them trying to get out of the way of these vehicles that have crashed. Clearly, I'm still waiting to pop in and safety issue of breakers. There is the baby sidewalk, but that path is not maintained properly. It wasn't even clean for Canada Day. And the only time that there's no boost problems happening is after the game. Money is going to spend you by maintaining Legion Way in the water. And the people have the grass and making, you know, they got trees and turn everything up and also back on the stuff. The divers move back, maybe difficult for residents to save the break. The biggest problem we're facing in the state is the safety issue that I was posed. Have you ever been down Legion Way when they have a large group of guys who are people? This usually happens on a weekend. Saying all that C P A and other holidays. And they can't go there. So there is a weekend here. So most sites provided to drop in the yard. I'm trying to make a difference, we should save the issue. Most of those are all off. You have to sign it, rule regulations. Regulations using the force, open launch. So as you can see. Campers, for example, are all standard and there's clearly a sign that they so, I mean, I know it's very pure. But the easiest and most effective way to put out a barrier where the road near us just before the dive site. And hopefully not slow him because he can't put any more speed on, sending us, they will run onto the rest. So that is So I hope that this problem can be resolved soon. Coming around to the spending, some of the Ian enjoys going down to the water. I've been wanting to avoid Legion Way because of the danger that the divers pose. In the end, our resolve is problems in the council too. You have the authority and responsibility to keep residents, many members in here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So are there any questions from this morning? Questions? Okay. All right, I don't have any questions. I think it's, you know, I mean, safety is, is a big concern and I understand that. And then we want to stay looking beautiful down there. So, you know, I, I think, you know, like I said before, we're, we're listening today. You know, there'll be no decision made today, but at least we want to hear the conversation that goes on on, on both sides and see what, what can be done to, to resolve the issues the best possible.
Yeah, I've been in touch with others, I've been definitely trying to figure something out. Because I get that from six to eight in the morning, they leave, we're in two, three, the afternoon. And I'm there every day. So it's not like they don't know what's going on.
That's good, I'm glad you guys have bad communication, but that's good. Okay, if there's no any other questions, nothing? Okay, all right. So then as a second delegation then, Ms. Helen Cooper from the diving at the, regarding driving at the heart of the water.
Thank you, thank you for speaking to me, I have to say today and thank you for being so quick. First of all, I'm Helen Cooper, I own a dive shop in Brockville, the Brockville Venture Center. I work with Prescott to get the diving record back in there as well. I dive boats into Googoo on the river, one in the lake. And we've been in business now for, it'll be 29 years. This year we'll be running the dive business. So I just want to say that first of all, I don't see Christine and I as being on separate, like different side of the fence here. Christine brought this to my attention and asked if I could be to help the situation. And I asked her for some examples and specifications. She sent me her letter. I feel good for myself to chat with a few key people in the area. I've got one, St. Ontario Shipwreck people here, a business owner. And a local diver who has been in the final structure. And I talked to them and said, okay, you know, maybe come to the meeting, let's listen to what people have to say, local residents. But ideally, our mission here today is to listen, to find out what the issue are and figure out a way to solve that. So that it keeps people safe. And my only other side of the fence hat is so that the divers can still enjoy the dive. And I believe that there is a way to be, we'll work together. There are a couple of things that I'd like to share. We talked about your game line, you've been always late. But I understand it's an issue. I've seen where the play area is, sorry, I should sort of say, sort of be better. I've seen where the play, the play area is. And Christine is right, it can be an issue for any vehicles coming around that's going too fast. And there is a high probability that they will be divers driving down the that's where they need to go, the whole idea. So we need to look at maybe some, some thoughts, how we can maybe get stop sign right on the corner, some vehicles have to stop where the place structure is. Maybe some, some better speed signs, I know, I think in Brockville also has to come into play a little bit. The second thing is that things like trash and bio ways, my bio ways can move in though not just they all can actually
Sorry, it's for the chair, so, yeah.
So that
It is, it is one of them, just
Okay, all right, just they wanted to learn about what she meant by that. So basically, that is a problem. There are washrooms there. I don't know if it's something we can look at. Improving more, but those are all sort of things down the road. I've only got 10 minutes, I have to make sure I keep my track here. So the biggest thing for me is, is
You're doing
The biggest thing for me is that I just wanted to educate council on some of the tourism dollars that the divers do bring as the local community. And I did, that's actually, I think, the actual numbers that we have from the survey that we did in Brockville, which is a bigger town, but at Centene Park, which is a similar shore diving site with a similar capacity for the total number of divers. They have a few more divers there at that particular site, but it's a similar entity to the Constoga. And if you look at the numbers from where they come from, a large percentage does come from Quebec. And there are small groups as well as bigger groups. And we, we instituted a term program in 2014, St. Ontario Shipwrecks, in order to get funding to continue to improve the park. We started selling tokens for $10 a token, it's good for the season. It was completely follow through basis, they didn't have to buy the token if they didn't want to, but most divers did. Ninety-six percent of the divers that were surveyed at the park had purchased a $10 token. We have them available at all the dive shops. We have them available at dive shops in Montreal, in Ottawa, as well as my dive shop in Brockville. And so the city, we, we on average sell 1,000 to 1,200 tokens a year. And 50% of that token money goes to the city of Brockville. 50% comes to St. Ontario Shipwrecks to do more improvements to the, to the school park that's there. So if that is a way to accumulate some funds to pay for some of the improvements that are necessary to make it safe for the local residents to be willing to allow the divers still to use Legion Way, then that could be a possibility to make something like that and still be in its best. The other thing I just wanted to go over real quickly, the survey results, we asked every diver whether they purchased a meal, whether they stayed overnight, did they visit anywhere else whilst they were in town? And I won't go over all the figures because they're right here in your, in your information packet here. But you'll see that a huge amount of people, 85%, stayed overnight. Now, I realize that Cardinal is, is a smaller community and doesn't have hotels and hotels, but I know that there are local B and Bs. A lot of Airbnbs around these days. And so I think the biggest thing is that the divers do bring money to the local economy, but it's difficult to see. So I'm here tonight and you knew I'm a diver and I've introduced the three people in the front row. But if we went to a restaurant, we went to Tim Porchens, if we went to a hotel or an Airbnb, would you know that we were divers? It's hard to identify a diver and I completely understand that when the local people see the divers doing the diving in the local dive sites, they're going to do their dive, they're going to pack everything up in their vehicle and they're going to leave. But where they go to is a local accommodation, they'll, they'll eat at a restaurant, they'll eat if they come for the day, they're probably going to gas up before they go because gas prices here are way cheaper than they are in Quebec. And whilst they're there, they're probably going to grab coffee and some snacks. And so my point is, is that it's difficult to see a diver spending money on the local economy. And I understand why the locals don't see it because they just sort of disappear, they're not in this school here. So in Brockville, I brought about these buttons, they're difficult to use, they have tags. And you see, I'm just wearing it on here, they just got a little habit, it's just aluminum, such as bend over and put so on to anything, so a jacket, a t-shirt, a hat, maybe something on this. And my mission in bringing about these buttons, I paid for them completely. I give them out to as many divers and their family as I can. Because in Brockville, I wanted to show the local community, because it's not just a cardinal thing, that the locals feel that the divers don't bring money to the local economy. It seems to be enormous for towns. I wanted to identify how many divers were out there in the hotels, in the restaurants, at Tim Porchens, at the gas station. So I encourage my divers to take these little buttons and wear them so that the locals can see them. And I think it's, it's helped in Brockville. There are still those that feel, this is not very much one into the economy, but there's less local people that feel that way. They're seeing more of these little buttons coming around. And I made them up for Prescott as well. And Prescott actually took over the buttons that I gave them, I gave them the first hundred, 500, I guess. And they've ordered more. And what they did for their buttons in Prescott was we, we advertised it and told the divers to collect these buttons. They put them in at they have a little restaurant, I have not, I didn't, um, I'm sorry. They, they put them in the local restaurants and, and places to stay, Colonial Inn. And told the divers if they wanted to collect their button, they had to go to a place of business to get the button. The ID was to help advertise these local places to stay, local places to eat, they would collect their button. Yeah, and another thing, another shame that you can use these buttons more if, if the local, you know, businesses are into it, you can use these for a discount. And we go to get them that way.
Yeah, you can take a couple of minutes or say one more, one more minute, how's that?
One more minute?
Okay. If we're done.
Yeah, so if we want to go with like the token or button program, I'm, I'm more than happy. As I said, Christine, I'm here to help, I'm here to try to find a solution for the issue that the locals are, are feeling. And I'd like to be able to work together with the divers because having had a dive shop so many years and working with the, the Aswet Fountain Islands, we have the ability to communicate with all these divers. Most of them will come through my shop, or if they don't, I can communicate with the Montreal Dive Shop, where we can get and learn out there about the rules, the regulations about purchasing totaling or getting your buttons. Like, I, I can be the vessel to get the information out.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you very much. Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you. Yeah, so, I mean, as far as questions I have, it's always hard to prepare questions when you don't I saw you as well, but, you know, so with regards to, to the token system, so you would manage the token system, would you basically provide the tokens for, for Brockville or Prescott?
So St. Ontario Shipwreck? I don't know, still can speak, they need the president.
I can let us speak from that, but I'm sure, just, just briefly, we're just here to answer your question.
That program, the city doesn't have to provide any money to the engine. If we have a problem, we find a solution, can we finance the solution out of the pocket money? So it's divers working for divers under the responsibility of the city. So if we have to call them anything, that open money can fund any improvement in part. And we are basically, we hope to come from Quebec. So we are playing with the Quebec dive shop and the local dive shop. And if a problem like that occurs, we like to know because we can do a speech or correct the situation directly with the dive shop in Montreal and reaffirm what's the rule and regulation in every dive site of that community. The last thing in mind is people that have problems with divers. We want to be part of solution, not part of the problem. And we can finance that for you. That's how we do.
So the tokens, we purchase them, we sell them at the end of the year. We get
And so yeah, so and I, I get your involvement in Prescott and, and Brockville right now. What's your involvement like in, in the coast of the site at this point in time? I just, I just wasn't clear at what you guys
We personally, I, S O S on the, maintains the Constoga, they, they find boring, they make sure that it's clear. In a lot of cases, it ends up being one of these big guy that can put the boring out on the Constoga, but it's all part of St. Ontario Shipwreck. So for me, the dive shop element, I don't physically have anything to do with the Constoga, other than the fact that because I've been around so many years, I, I, I like to help make sure that, you know, diving into all the different local communities, like whatever I can to
Not just in the city, all dive sites are under supervision, indirect supervision of S O S, they don't charge you for it. One of the chapter and Constoga and Brasse are under the S O S, all of a chapter. John Wright, the president, could be here tonight, I'm here as president of, of Mountain Chapter. And we look over the dive site and try to work with the cities on whatever problem, the current website and try to figure out some solutions where we will be able to have so everyone can swim this and
Okay, so, and then I did have just one last question and they, so, so have you had similar issues with, with, say, Brockville or Prescott? And had to resolve them, I guess, is my next question.
Yes, it is, it's pretty much like seven years ago, eight years ago, we had exactly the same issues. We fixed all of them and now all the rest of them. They are part of the solution as well. Anything that goes wrong, not even the second phone call, it's all my fault. And then I address the situation and we fix. Because we like when people are having fun and enjoy sites. Who have they are, sites or just picture them, divers winners, we don't care, people have to enjoy the site, not fun.
Okay, so, I appreciate that. Now, is that, that's your, any questions, anybody here, are we? Broken good, okay, thank you very much, I appreciate the both, you both, both groups coming, you guys coming as well and and giving us a lot of insight, a lot of things to ponder at this point in time, so. Yep.
I had this one quick thing.
And
Not normal. The speed limit and stuff, there are two signs down on the bridge that come down to the window. That says, twenty who are as young. Some of them rules need to be enforced. They are
Okay, so, yeah, fair enough, so.
There to be no
Right, so I hear you, I hear you for sure, I do hear, I do, I do, I promise.
So I was like, we all look together and in the look
We're going to ensure that that
So, sorry guys, so I hear you, I see you guys, I guess, I encourage it, I really encourage it. When you leave me tonight, whatever that is, that, that, you know, I'd love to have some hearing, you guys have some dialogue and then, and have some ideas, but, you know, we'll, we'll listen and, and staff us for it as well. I mean, we'll, you know, waste some options and see if we can consider something that, to try to help, help the problem, help the issue at this point in time. So thank you for coming, I appreciate it. And, okay, that's great. All right. All right. Okay. Okay, so, okay, so now moving on to number six, which is action, information and discussion items. Everybody can leave on this here. Okay, yeah, it's just like a quick segment, second. You're starting to play that someone with everything. Thank you, all right, thanks everybody. All right, so anyways, on to action, information and discussion items. Six A is live, which is land use planning. Number one is information on lock, we're asking a better subdivision, tree, earth, berm. And in the audience today is the owner developer, Mr. David Simpson, so thank you for attending, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you coming, and that's good. To the CDC, if you want to introduce us into the topic.
Yeah, sure, so I think that there are some new, the members of council on this committee this year from when this item was last discussed, I'm going to give a very brief so on these lands in Cardinal, on the west side of Chinney Row in Northern Cardinal, there is lands with the draft plan approval for subdivision. That draft plan was Uh that draft plan was uh first in two thousand and thirteen and it's received uh acceptance since then. Originally, it was for ninety three uh lots for single dwellings. In two thousand and twenty one, um the streets are not available for dwellings, applied for um. A revision to that previously approved draft plan. And it's now approved for nine five months. But also with that revision, uh the county, the county says the approval authority um allows some changes to the noise contamination requirements. And previously there was required five meter berm built between the train tracks and the residential building. Now, uh, the requirements, I think, have uh have changed and a new noise study was provided for the application. The requirements now, this is requirement of council, was for a tree, a berm instead of a wall. Uh and in reviewing that recommendation or request, I should say, the um. Council had asked for the opportunity to review some details for that need for added future meetings. So we are going to go into speaking though from uh Everford Developments. And I thought that was a good time to bring this forward to community. We're still in the review process of some of the other uh plans and studies that have the prioritized conditions before um. That becomes an approved for the subdivision. We know we can start, but while we have a landscaping plan and staff are satisfied with the landscaping plan, I thought this was a good one for it to commit. And to share those details that were promised to council some kind of those. So the tree or berm is going to have um to evergreen trees. Uh in which we saw like pine, it's going to be treated on the side of the berm that is close to the railway tracks. The other side will be grass. Um. There's uh the plan is that new plantations should include many species, uh and they can just from a local nursery, which is graves. Um. Middleway for the trees, that was another item that's a lot to discuss was is one point eight meters of what the plan indicates. And these trees are going to be planted as part of phase one of development, which is further away from the berm. That's going to allow some more time, some more growth before phase two closer to the berm uh service.
Very much, and uh I I take it as your exceptional planning skills, and as you started talking, the trade actually passed by as well, so. You can hear. So there you go. Um, anyways, that's off topic. Uh. Um, where to go from here? So uh, I mean, obviously, the discussion isn't about what to do with this berm. And uh so I'm hoping that questions, anybody in the presence that wants to talk about it, so uh. Mr. Billy.
Maybe not a question about the berm, but. And maybe, maybe I'm already asked this question, but maybe you might be the one to ask. The Stewie's treatment plan. In Enhandel ninety six.
Go uh through the uh through the through the chair, uh yes, uh the. We have uh, we we have looked at respect to uh this subdivision, but now that all has one respect capacity. And uh the the system is given.
Actually, I think it's a perfect place for subdivision. And that that land, by the way, does it, does it have a right of way along to number two?
So.
Was there not an old lay layer road allowance down in there?
I don't recall seeing anything.
Uh through the Cherokee, say, oh, my day. We used to be called Marbury Street and now called Boyer Street up at the end. That is a right of way right on through there. And then you can catch out of that road. Where. Tom was a roadhead, that's the thing about roads. There and the next street beside.
Don't know if we're going to get that answer free for sure today, but.
Long way from that subdivision.
And just one more comment, trees. I love spruce trees. But spruce tree is growing really fast. And really tall. And you might start off with a a a, yeah, not three foot tree. And in fifteen years, it'll be fifty feet high. Because I just removed a whole bunch of them off of my lot. So, I mean, that's another thing to think about.
The chair. That 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 was one of the uh. Uh positive with respect to that, I think, creating planet error, as the feeling was that President should probably uh like to look at the uh. At the trimmings of the uh uh the uh.
Yeah, and if you get them tight enough, they're going to tack down a lot of the whole thing. Over the years, they don't grow quite tall. Yep. And they can break off once in a while on the wind.
Yes, I know that for sure. I have several trees in my lot.
That's a good idea.
It's just, oh, sorry.
Sorry, you see these fences along the four oh one, you know, they don't break the first year. And then in the five years, they all start to sag and they all start to need and the next thing. They don't look very nice.
They do block the the noise, I guess, obviously, you know, the train, but you can't hear it. So.
Uh because there's mail. Uh through the care to see the opener. Uh reference Dave asking about the sewer plant, what about the water plant, Dave, the bowl or subdivision there? Is that going to be able to handle power?
Yes, through the through the through the chair.
And and right, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Samuel, so we've already reserved that capacity, we've already basically earmarked it. So it's not just that it's capable of doing it, we've already, in our calculations, it's part of our calculations as well, we have left for capacity. Right, correct.
Yeah. Two of us. Then say over the last ten, twelve years, you've done a substantial amount of uh sewer mining objects, which should actually uh. Assisted against additional capacity by removing some uh occupation.
Yes, Mr. Spencer. Well, sorry, I only do that because I've been in this conversation about a year ago, at least, I think, at this point as well, so. Probably at least a few times now. Uh, okay, uh, but can any questions you can, or?
Um, yeah, no, it looks great. I just wondered when they were going to break random.
Always contentious, contentious question. Let's not answer that today, please. Um, fair enough, uh, just what I'm. I had the same question. Okay. And Deputy Mayor, uh yeah, I'm fine with the burn action. I'm I'm happy that we're going to go this uh route. And I am happy, I wouldn't dare, I'd rather have fifty feet. And uh, and treating the dying itself. And I'm all for it. I think it's a great plan. I'm glad we put that in, listeners. Thank you. Okay, well, and then, yeah, I was, only thing I was going to add to that is, I think, you know, with, we have a a different, say, uh. A a different set of rules now with regards to site plan agreements and then things like that, but it sounds like the uh the plans the developer has, everybody seems to be in favor of. So uh, I don't think I have much to add to that myself, but um. Let's uh check that box now. Anybody have anything else before we close this off? Nope, okay. There, there's no recommendation on this. No, it's, there are other information, actually, so clearly it's not. All right, um, did I even think that I should be talking about? I don't think so, I think I do have to approach it, so.
That's true, through the chair, though, I would think of uh from a staff perspective, we're uh, we were satisfied with the plan. Certainly haven't heard uh anything around the table that would uh fund that, so.
Okay, great, um, very good. Uh, thank you very much, and uh, yeah, that's, like I said, let's see what the next one is, so. Uh, all right, so moving on to number uh six A two, proposed site plan control by law. See, see.
The chair, so. Um, and the site, I don't know, I've heard, so the people around that is from two thousand and two. But I've already filed by, it's been two, but it's getting a little bit older, it's been some more recent changes to the um to the planning acts. And to the point that we do things, and I think that this proposal by law, that reflects how we process and handle these applications today. Um. For newer members of the committee, just really briefly, site plan control is a tool that potentially can use to uh implement certain controls on development. Official control or industrial institutional development. Um, it can, it, I would say it most often helps us with the dangers compatibility, meaning to require hets or overgrown trees in between some places. That might not be very compatible with each other. Um, can also be used to ensure that proper drainage is in place, that's still mobile, it is considered a homicide. Um. So it's a, it's a helpful tool used by the country. So this bylaw, a few things are different, it's well, we care to the previous budget, and we'll put it in there as a package. Um. Bill twenty three doesn't allow simple site plan control on residential development, where there are ten or fewer dwellings on uh sites. So the final of the report that got as well, we also extended it to accessory buildings, the home based businesses um on those residential sites as well. Uh. February buildings, use your infrastructure and reminder divisions where the foyer extension is ten percent or less. Um, and accessory buildings are less than thirty meters square. Um, it's a site that's not. Been helpful in this case, but the use is already in existence and we're not hoping to have a big change there. Um. Last year, it was in July, the council delegated a party to approve site notes to the C A O. That was required by bill one oh nine. Um, and here it would also, that, so that wording is reflected within the file, but that delegation by law is a separate by law from the site. Um, but the C A O would also be able to approve minor details from a site. Um, for group information, uh so that a whole new amendment didn't have to be uh really comfortable with the process there. And that clause, if actually in some of the agreements that are in place, that file actually is allowed, the entire amendment could be um done in writing, it's not an amendment. Um, it's not in all of our previous um site plan agreements that uh included the file, which is make that consistent through. Um. I think this proposal by law gives more clarity on the application process. It provides a little bit more detail than what was in the previous detail, but you were supposed to play it out. Um, things that we do today, the pre consultation meeting, which is, we don't have to require, we're allowed to require it. But uh we've been strongly encouraging it and putting that in the bylaw um is another way to let residents know that, like, you pre consent with us before you submit an application. Um, it really helps with the application process, otherwise they're submitting something and they don't know what's going to be our standards, they don't know what we're looking for, what we require. Um, and it just needs to complete application and it's taken a little long. So I think this proposal, there's more clarity there. Um. So just as um, for information on the site plan people process, I'm happy to answer questions on that. It updated our um at the official application itself, so it's more acceptable, it's not formal forms. On there, I don't know if you've seen the old site plan application on our website right now, it's like it's maybe the photo copy of the files and then scan and put on the uh on the website. So it's just, again, it's just, it's been just been a while for a while, it's for, so the new document is more accessible and I think has a better clarity.
It's okay, it's 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 a big guy, and I think you were, you were probably wise to cover as much of it as you could, because there's some changes that in Glasgow, so. All right, start this anyway, then, can anything there, you're signing down, or? Cancel our talk. Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, I just have this site planning control application review process. Um, is that pretty much standard uh due to the chair to 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 uh Wendy or the CEO? Pre consultation about the steps we have to go through.
Mr. Chair, I I believe that other municipalities follow a very similar process. In my research, I found that some municipalities have even more helpful tools for the applicant, like a site plan control. That is quite a few pages long, but would give them more detailed information or to provide an application, I don't know if that's more helpful or maybe a different system, one who has smaller sites to develop. Um. Um. But it's like the the pre consultation stage isn't required, it can mostly allow us either encourage or require it. Um. Consultation with other um, with other interesting or the counties that are running around, get the planning act requires that. If it's near the uh forum series highway, that's we have to um consult with the N two O. So those things are conversations I think are happening in any municipality, um the review process. I would say probably the same. I guess after that, if you comment on what other municipalities have done, if you have changes since Bill twenty three, or um council was required to develop the authority to a staff manual or to play some help for group. Site files, but one of the um, one of the things didn't change is that if you're wanting to enter into an agreement, that had to be with the maintenance of the site. That brings us up to the idea to buy control. Um, so uh I imagine if other municipalities are requiring those agreements like we are, I mean, there's still one to challenge as well.
Yeah, I just don't want to get tied up, as you know, red tape, uh red tape person, it's like moving. And uh, just when I look at it, oh, jeez, we have to go with this, everybody go through that. I mean, I know there's some good uh information that gets started and get, and gets people coming back with great information, but. I just don't want them to be followed down either, especially, not talking about. As developers, but. Individuals is probably worse, because it might just get frustrating, get a bit, that's all.
No, that's good, thank you. Well done. No, I'm not. Yeah, I mean, uh, I I hear what the deputy mayor is saying, I was a little, not not concerned, I mean, I uh, I I I'm so used to forms of my day to day, my day job, I feel my day to day living. You get so used to the the building, it builds the story, so that's we have enough information essentially to do this, and so uh. Uh, and I believe as well that you guys are also usually very uh, I'm able to, if somebody has a question about the form, they can call you and they can answer, so. You know, I I just, my gut feeling is that uh that we're there to answer questions as well, and so hopefully this is what that. Just questions, so I'm, for sure. Um, I did see, and it was. Uh, I apologize, I usually try and send some questions, and I have any questions ahead of time. Uh, in section one point three, I did see uh where it talked about um. Uh, the, you know, parking lots or sites for the location of three or more trailers as defined in. Now that I'm reading it, I realize, I thought I read that as mobile homes, that's what I thought I saw. Oh, I did, sorry, the three or more mobile homes, that they read at the very bottom of page ten or forty four. Um, so there's, there is something in, is this just, this open a door, is this just a just a case class for? All right, yeah.
Um, this definition of development is directly from the planning. Um, and nothing in here uh changes what's required by the zoning by law. Um, it's just, and it's just a definition of what, what, it doesn't mean that this is what is. It's from that, before you develop a property, develop the house, but this um. Uh definition didn't need a statement.
Thank you. Uh, yes, can you tell us the thing?
The process, yeah, so once there is a complete application, if you don't know why I started at that point, it was like simply complete application. We have thirty days to let the applicant know whether or not, once the application is submitted, we have thirty days to let them know whether or not this is a complete application or if there are items missing. Um, we also have sixty days from the time we have the first application to um we have a decision on on that application. So if you don't have an application, off stops. We got the information that we need and then we roster, so sixty days, I guess, is the short answer. Sometimes to gather the information that's needed to read an application could take some time. Okay.
Okay, any other questions getting driven out of that? Um, yes, Mr. CEO.
Thank you. You're just taking this for the room, or they're really hoping from the this, you know, the original line, it's sort of. Uh, early communication between the applicant and the municipality. Do a better understanding of what their attempts to accomplish. So that we didn't provide them the information that they need to sit back for us, but it's not, you know, near that sixty day mark, right? And we get, we get, we have a patient can get moving on that, so that we're not. Creating, I can respect as a delay. That's the, that, that's the hope, and you know, we, we didn't go home not to, you know, make it mandatory for a presentation, but I highly recommend it. So that there's not as much back and forth. Uh, through that process, you know, to achieve a, we not.
Better write the first time, kind of concept. Okay. Okay, um. End of there. So uh, I just, page, but I'll find it again here, second, in a second. But I know there was a recommendation on this one. Page thirteen, page thirteen, thank you very much, Mr. Martell. Uh, so on page thirteen. Um. There it is, sorry, on page thirteen, we have a. On page thirteen or forty four, no, okay. On page thirteen or forty four, no, okay, thirteen or forty. Yeah, okay, so fair, so thank you, gentlemen, for that, okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Do I have a second or? Moved by uh by uh. And seconded by Deputy Mayor Stephen Dill about. Thank you, I'd like to help you a lot, appreciate that. Uh okay, uh so any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? All right, there you are. Thank you very much, and uh that way you can uh so that I have two council that will approve that. Hopefully, I'll get that, get that from council and have a discussion there and uh hopefully look at them all. All right, uh moving on to section six B, work economic development, there is none this week, so uh. Uh we'll just pass that to uh. Sorry about that, uh yes, so uh sorry, section six A three is a discussion. Um of the minimum lot frontage and lot size and the federal policy area. Uh okay, I know we gave you some direction, I don't think you have anything to introduce about it, let's just uh. I can, I can probably go forth if you have nothing.
Reducing the required lot size and moving it in the uh rural policy. Uh we're we're interested in the committee's session and having them.
Good, Mr. Chairman. If I could, I just did just a little bit of research in the last two or three weeks, okay? And I pretty much got a little partial together that what every municipality in East Atlanta were doing. Uh severance wise, wouldn't the exception of Westport, because it doesn't quite mirror many of the the townships in in East Atlanta. So if I could just pass that, it might be a nice thing to look at.
Well, I mean, I think, I don't know, uh I mean, I appreciate that, I think usually we try and send these things, we staff just picture, we've had everything, but I mean, you have something. We brought forth as well, I mean, it's.
It just gives you a a stat on what other municipalities.
And I think the discussion we're gonna have is gonna tend towards, you know, seeing we give the staff some direction on that, I don't think it's harmless to have the data. So, you know, yeah, absolutely, so, okay, perfect. You, so uh, all right. Okay, so um. Yeah, okay, so you want to just have a discussion, everything else, so. Uh I appreciate this, you know, you giving this, this is, this is uh an excellent thing to help us have a starting conversation with, for sure. Uh what was the general gist of this, I guess, was the question I'd have for you.
My opinion?
Well, I mean, you you brought this work as a discussion, right, and we can have this discussion, so.
I would be more than happy.
This data set you're talking about here, so just to be.
Well, want to show. It it's pretty straightforward, that that the data, it has all the municipalities of Legion Grammar's, Cap Westport. Uh listed and it tells each one how, what the lot size is. Uh what the lot frontage is and the number of severances or lots that you can get off of uh. Off of the properties. I I may as well just invite them over there.
No, well, I mean, it depends, I just wanted to introduce the topic itself, so. Yep, so is there a question you have then, or is?
Well, I think that when the the Mr. Dillabot uh asked for the frontage and the. The lot size, I think there's other things that we need to discuss, and maybe we can discuss them all tonight together tonight, because it's. A a particular date that I think that needs to be erased. And uh also, I'm not so sure, it only needs to be from the rural policy development, I think it also should. Flow into. Severance is like. The last clearing severance, if you remember, the mayor asked uh why were we. Since the, since the counties and the provinces are like, look, looking to. Keep as much agricultural land as possible, why were we severing uh the house for the clares of a property? And taking two acres, which seems to be a lot, a lot of.
Sorry, one one hectare, right?
Two acres, two acres. So, my opinion, I think we need to discuss the size of the lots for the township, because my feeling is. And I don't know what the rest of the county.
Is there, you're going to talk about lot size, right, we talked about that in the Friday?
Yeah, so I I feel that. The municipality used to be, and I don't know how many, how many official plans, maybe back one. Where these lots were to be an acre. The new, when the new uh plan come in, they became active, which is quite a lot for anybody that knows how to factor in an acre. I had a little uh. Information, I actually called the township when they were doing the last official plan. And and had some concern with moving to a hectare. Um a lot of wasted land, a lot of land that's either gonna have rucks in it, junk in, weeds in it. Um and for you people that uh like to know. There was a particular neighbor of mine who's not there anymore, who had one acre lot and couldn't even keep it, keep it cut. And I know that there were comments that there were complaints that went to the township for you to. Institute the E R by law and get cleaned up a little bit. I think we should revert back to an acre. I think a hectare is far too much to build your home on in anywhere in the township, regardless of of what. Uh area you're in. Uh I also think that the frontage is way too much, where the large of the nine municipalities that I have prepared here. We are by far the 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 largest amount of uh frontage requirement. Um I think we should move it back to where it was, I think we should move it back to an acre. I think we should move it back to the hundred and fifty, I think we should follow the Elizabeth Town Kit. I think that's exactly what we should call, an acre, one fifty. Um and I also think we need to bump up the number of uh lots that we're creating. Again, when you look at the lots that we're creating. Were the second lowest out of nine municipalities, the majority of them are three, and there's actually one that even has four. I know there may be some concern from, you know, in the past, it was, well, the health unit wants an acre, but we're not dealing with the health unit anymore. And wants a hectare, we're not dealing with the health unit anymore, and by the way, uh the health unit, it wasn't, it wasn't a demand, it's what they would like. Uh but Reno Lakes just had their official plan accepted by the counties in July of two thousand and twenty three. And they accepted the official plan with a one acre designation for several lots. So I don't know where the, where the township got off from the one acre to the hectare. I wasn't part of that, but I do know that it did get some misinformation, because when I phoned the township, we're not gonna tell you who was talking to.
Thank you.
The, the. And and complained about the size and didn't agree with the size, I was told that all the municipalities at least at where we're going to a hectare. Well, obviously, that was not completely what I wanted to hear, because it didn't anymore in the plan or right, so. That's my feeling, I know that a hectare, a one acre is a lot of grass to cut when you have a house on it. I have an acre lot and I only cut half of the grass. And the rest of my property is self-encased off into the the pasture property, the haze, I don't know, that I don't even have to deal with. So I think it's just too much, I think it should, it should be reduced, everything should be reduced back to the one acre lot.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Doby.
I have one question, you have the chair, Mr. Doby, a little later, I know a little maker is two hundred, but two hundred, what is an acre?
It's two point four seven, so it's basically. All right. Okay, anything else, Mr. Doby?
I'm uh, I'm I'm a hundred and ten percent of Mr. Doby, I I I want this, where you can go and reduce to two. In a rural areas, that's where most of our homes are gonna be built. Um you know, a couple of subdivisions, but rural areas, where it's gonna be built, and two and a half acres is a good example. Can go and look at the at the Hyman Road, and there's new homes there on the north side that was built. And uh they don't cut concrete grass, because these, they just don't get enough, huh? Just to be, now it's grown up, it leaves. And it's, it is too much, and and I think we can get more. More building done with a smaller acre and smaller frontage. I'm I'm a hundred percent with Elizabeth Kittles, I would even like to see Kankit for uh number of lots. That's so, um I'll even go that far on that one, so I'm a hundred percent.
Yes.
I don't know that I'm a hundred percent in agreement with Mr. Doby, but.
I mean, I I think it's important to note, I mean, so, you know, we're gonna have this discussion, so we can give uh just some direction. Uh to to the staff, uh to, you know, my my feeling anyways is uh to take a look at reviewing the uh the two point four seven acre policy. Um the uh, you know, we're in favor of something maybe towards one acre, and I guess, and I guess before I go further. I think we should make it clear that there could be conditions or circumstances which, which you come back from, the staff goes back to us, that that may, you know, have implications on this. But I think what I'm hearing from people, and uh I'll say it, and if there's any concerns, we can uh can discuss those, but I think we're hearing uh, you know, favoring a sort of. Sort of one acre size, um and I don't know if we've got clearance on what kind of frontage, so I, my feeling is we can defer to staff on on that, based on uh. Their recommendation, unless somebody has a number in their head that they think makes sense, but I think. The fact is, I think between staff and and possibly between our planner, uh that the expertise is is out there. Uh and then, and as far as the third goes, that that we we introduced as well today is uh somebody lots of divisions should be allowed on that. Have we lost to be allowed on that, that same property, so. Did I miss anything, did I kind of capture these, the sentiment of what we're trying to get uh staff to take a look at?
Question through the chair to whoever, like, remember your answer, do we know why? What was the thinking behind going from an acre to an acre?
We don't have an answer, so.
No, I'd rather be until that.
Yeah, no, I I think it's probably worth doing our due diligence on, I don't want to get an answer that we're not a hundred percent on, so uh. Uh and and, you know, I I share your thoughts, but I don't have any confirmation that we just left it at that same uh lot size, same the last official. But we did just, just last year, I guess, in the last few years, so, okay, is, so any objections to sort of staff looking into into those aspects?
Oh, Mr. Doby, if we could just discuss one more thing, and it's kind of, it's kind of a. The crutch right now of severances at least in every in Pittsburgh. Um there is specific date. That are put on severance, for example, it starts in December of two thousand and three. So if you've purchased the property. And it is all, if you purchased a rural property that's say a fifty acres, let's say that, if you purchased that. Uh after two thousand and three, and the person before you had taken two severances off of their land, but you have all kinds of land yet to sever. You can't do it because of the two thousand and three date. I think the two thousand and three date is now twenty years old. I think the two thousand and three dates should be modified or changed to. I'm saying ten years, I think it should go to two thousand and thirteen, it's still a ten, a ten year uh life. Uh it just doesn't make sense for two of two thousand and three anymore. Because there's properties out there that have already, that, you know, there's rural properties out there, there's rural, the rural farms, you know, that. Well, usually a farm that's rural is pretty quasi bike farm, it's not a, it's not like a cat's trotting farm, or it's not like a dairy farm. But that there's land out there that is scrubland, there's bushland on it, there's. Maybe just pasture land that's that the owners are wanting to take lots off of, but can't because of the two thousand or. Uh to just two thousand and three date and the previous owners are taking the two severances off one years ago. Okay, I think they need to be opened up again to two thousand, I would go halfway down the middle, two thousand and thirteen.
Any comments on that, so actually, first of all, before I, if anybody asks for comments, is there anything that comes to mind? Can I see, or can you see where that could be quite issue, and take a look at that date to see if you wanna review that, before I say that we can.
I I think through the. Here, it certainly seemed like the main cross of the discussion is uh greater intensification. In those rural areas, by by creating more lots, more development. That basically.
That that's that's.
Directing intensification away from the seven year.
And and I realize that that's. Yeah, I'm reading. I, so, I feel, uh, we recovered on that before I.
Mr. Chairman, if I turn to 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 today, so this this, let me get my head around this a little bit, so. Spencerville is a settlement area, right? Where is the, where do you see the growth in Spencerville right now? For me, you've got one family in Spencerville, well, they're not, they're not there anymore, but the property's there and it's telling their name. And it will not, I won't live long enough to see any of it develop, because. It's that kind of land that passes down from family to family to family, so you've got no growth to the north of Spencerville. You've got no, very little growth to the south of Spencerville, because the same family owns land on the other side of of Spencerville.
So cautious territory.
The only growth we've got is not now on, on cap, can't grow twenty one down to. The four sixteen and a little up wooden road on the one side, so there's not a lot of growth in the settlement area like Spencerville. So, I think that you need to create more lots in these rural areas, but I also think that. There needs to be a stipulation in that the uh. The retained lot, you know, must have a. A frontage of at least sixty, sixty five, sixty six feet, because there's, there's no. There are no big companies coming into whether into into particularly the back of the township. Uh that are going to come and put some divisions in, at least I haven't heard of it, you know, they're coming to capital. And he asked capital's gonna fill that one time, and then they may move a little bit to the south, but they're gonna stay in capital because they've got the water in the sewer, you know? So if you left in these rural areas, if you left sixty five foot, which is pretty much what the counties have for a a road allowance. You know, if you left that much, so that whenever they get ready to move. Whenever they get ready to move a little bit to the south to put in subdivisions, your road allowance is already there to let them on to the Hyman Road, the the all these township roads. And anything that's built along these roads, uh. The new development can take. Place. Behind the 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 lots that are already set up off of the road. And 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 also, you know, it it. If if you have more houses along some of these roads that that have the rural designation, you know. They can farmers can come in and if the and if the land is is. Fairly decent. There's no reason like that they can't crop. Because the people that would be interested in the land would be, there's only the five farmers in Edgburn that are interested in purchasing land. They they could crop in behind those houses just as if. They weren't there.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, I think we're going to ask some of the staff to to do a look at this. I don't think we need to get that answer just particularly with this moment. But I I believe the CEO who heard the question and for that. Um, anybody else have any other comments on, uh, uh, you know, actually, I was asking about the, uh, the twenty twenty, the two thousand and three dating, uh. Uh, to be looked at as relating maybe any other questions or comments on that? Uh, yes, Mr. Martel, sorry.
So so here in the chair, if it helps with the staff, I've heard several. People talk about this. I think the most common issue, the most common scenario is apparently. Cut off a wing or two acres for a child or. I think what we want to try to do is make it easier for people to do stuff like that. I don't think this is much of a commercial thing when people want to buy fifty acres and make fifty rural lots. This is more of a. Residents that's living here now and wants to either, you know, quit farming and sell. Two or three lots off to to make his retirement or it's like in our case, we have a huge difficulty. Sever off a little bit of property to. Sell to a dollar to build it. I think that is sort of the the hundred people who want lots probably that's going to come in together.
So, um. So I I think I I I'm going to reach out to the CEO now to make sure, uh, did you get enough from this conversation or the CEO and CDC to, uh. Uh, to bring something forward at some point, uh, down the road.
So, Mr. You were fine just sort of making this, uh, you know. In recognition.
Sure, sounds good, yeah.
Intensification, I I heard of one. For my. Other areas. I anticipate that there's interest. In front of there's that 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 interest out of that.
Right, okay, so sounds good. So so intensifying, uh, a little bit of the rural area and it would have been, of course, the official plan has, I think, sixty percent of homes. Uh, we're targeting to the settlement areas. I think we had in mind, but, uh, you know, it is sixty percent, right? Sorry.
We will.
If you guys. So, yeah, so we'll prepare all that. Yeah, so so we're looking basically just a lot of heads to say that we're in favor of having, uh, staff look into, uh, uh, swell, uh. Centralized, which probably is centralized, centralization is the wrong word, I apologize, but intensification, sorry. I get intensification into the rural areas, so. Uh, so if we're just getting a lot of heads, is that the the direction we want to give to staff? Okay. Okay, Mr. Martel, has one help?
I think you made that word off.
Mr. Deputy.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so there you go. So I think we have that consensus that we're looking for some sort of smaller lot size, uh. Uh, intensive, not a justification necessarily, but in the rural areas. It is a real. Canadians, what's your names? Uh, okay, okay, uh, so that being said, that can move on, I believe, let's fast that up. Okay, so, uh, now, there is no six B, we're in economic development, so six C, play in recreation. We have an information, uh, item without, uh, the twenty twenty three earth day cleanup activities, um, it's very nice, uh. Okay, yes.
Um, this year is not going to make about two or eight activities. The first one we heard is several of the local companies, like Pink Hill, One Time. Um, firms, places, points, reports. Uh, when we are going to, uh, take new, you know, time to be more than keep. Uh, there will be a big dinner, uh, a lunch. The public will be provided by the day plus and we will be. Robbing on the sixth and first, three one, there'll be a program, China, and. So at this point, another team up, we will go to our management area.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions about that? Thanks, sorry, thanks, Rachel. What, uh, yes, during the C E O.
Yeah, the part of the chair, my, uh. My dad is updated, I remember actually. On the. Recreation.
I probably should have done it, actually. Thank you.
To make sure that everyone.
Yeah.
I I anticipate they did.
So, yeah, but I I apologize, yes, Rachel Porter is is the, uh, is in the red corner of the rights or a great important. So thank you again, Rachel, for that and, uh. You know, uh, thank you, Mr. C E O, for assuming it was your fault instead of mine, thank you as well. Uh, okay, any any questions or comments on another thing? Yes, Mr. Martel.
Through the chair, I assume this is an invite for down, so we can show up and help.
Yes, um, more information to give.
We have a meeting Wednesday.
Oh, so. That sounds good.
I'll be attending and reading it.
Of course, they. Okay, that's, uh. Uh, that's great, and and it's great to see, uh, businesses coming in and try and help the community as well. But you're helping coordinate this out and, uh. Uh, that's definitely really appreciated. Is there an action on this? No, it's just. Thank you very much. Yeah, that's great. Perfect. Okay, uh, thanks again. Okay, so, uh, information on the recreational program update again, uh, again to, uh, to you, Rachel, on this one.
Um, so the recreation department have successfully put in a successful. The, um, now she's, I think, uh, did herself as well, it's very, very successful. So it's definitely fifteen, it is only seventeen. So I know this is one, um. Some of the current program around world series are. Uh, C P H P, but there's some additional classes. Girl on land, land of the great activity. They also started a new Lincoln inside program to, you know, as long as it is. Some of our winter programs we have had were cookie decorating, we have some different disciplines. We have public saving, hand taught saving, all these things, harsh weeks saving. Some of our summer programs, we opened our camp registration this morning. I have already proposed two sessions in cargo. We grew a swimming camp this evening, but we have two, we have two sessions. In cargo, who has that? Johnstown, each session is two weeks. This year will be two a week and two of our. Our swimming council will also be available next month. Uh, some day trips. Uh, not long as time, and once. So our program this year are new, uh, human life coaching programs, which encourage it to become high class. There's a little bit of a shortage around the bar this day, we probably. Uh, we have our office business, waiting for me to cover this for me. We're posting here offering us income, national communication, national order, recent education. Uh, box supervisor. Uh, by students, by. By setting the shopping code, it's getting to stay. Uh, the fire program, we're gonna have a new table, it's a whole. It will be a generous thing and personally, we.
Thank you, Rachel. That's a lot of activities happening here. Really, really good to see. Uh, okay, any knowledge, anything or or?
I just think it's great. I know, um, the office that never, it went very well last year. So keep it up.
Uh, yeah, thanks very much, Rachel. Uh, job well done, going in the right direction, giving. People quality life they want. What they enjoy, I see up here on Fridays, even with the seniors, we have. We covered it all from seniors to children to young families, so. That's what it's all about. So great job. Keep it up. Thank you.
It's great, cool, uh. Councillors now.
Uh, great job, well done. I just have one question, uh, from the chair to Rachel. In these, uh, job positions that you're, I believe, is job is the like the national lifeguard certification and all that. Is it just for students or the adults who apply for this as well?
Um, is of course. Anyone who's seen this.
You made a good life there.
Yes, I was, that's true. But we all swim that day. Mr. Doby.
I just think it's great what you're doing. I think the more that we can do for the children. Um, Edgburn and not only Edgburn, I mean, this car, there's our Prescotts, you know, I think. If we can keep them busy in the summertime and keep them happy, I mean. That's a good start in life.
Sure, yes, absolutely. So, you know, uh, echoing some of the comments here, uh, you know, uh, I I think a great job. I mean, you're capturing, you're capturing all sorts of areas of of our population and, uh. Uh, and and I think it's important to me, we're trying to, uh, uh, whether we're trying to or not, I think the community is going to build around us anyway, because the people are moving from the city out to here. And so the more we have these services available, uh, I think that gives more attraction for for people coming to buying new homes and, uh, and 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 send it in the area. So, uh. Uh, you know, that effort is this is not just about. The today, but it's also showing the fact that we have a good instructor that we're able to try to do this. This is, I really appreciate that and that. All that you're doing there. Um, one one question I do have is, uh, you know, I know there's a lot of online registration and things. Do you have altered it? For some people, I mean, not I mean, not myself, but there are people who don't have internet or don't use the internet. So do you have other mechanisms? I mean, you're not going to those are for people to get involved with that.
Um, our swimming last two registered will be on, will be in person, uh, someone can register. You can't continue to be up there. I I will just. You try.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, um, that's all I had. Anybody else? Something they can say for that? Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you very much, Rachel. I appreciate this. Uh, okay, moving on to number seven, let's see, uh, information on the careful waterfront use. Through the C E O.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This sort of saying from from a couple of the, uh, earlier delegations this evening. Uh, I think this was one of the, uh, the priority items that, uh, Council was asking, uh. Myself, at least in in staff, what I do. So, you know, I think it's it's pretty safe to say that, um. The divers sort of are are included within the community improvement plan and in in. The the vision, uh, we we would set forth in in twenty twelve. Uh, as 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 the value to to the community. And I think most of them again, always set up, giving the economic development strategy, I'm really. Uh, uh, being that to a little little color, for lack of a better word, that the gem of the waterfront that is available, they're trying to. Improve those assets and amenities and I think that really through, uh, the pandemic, uh, where. We we will see members typically may have traveled elsewhere, but were very restricted with, uh, with, you know, ability to travel. Uh, actually suffered, uh, the, uh. Some some of the great local, uh, items that we have. The offer and I I think with the increase that in activity and the various users, that's efficient voting, uh. Diving, enjoying the, uh. Through walkways in that area. The more the more people in a, uh, in a combined area and normally presents some. Issues that they that that they are. So they really, um, as part of that first phase, it really will get collecting movement or data and looking at some of those. Areas that possibly could be improved on with safety, but also getting a getting a feel for the percentages that are utilizing. Uh, the dive site from overall those that are using the boat launch and those that are just enjoying. We'll call it general amenities, uh, as a as a starting point, I think, will be, will be valuable data in looking at some of those other. Areas that, uh, at least maybe in jail, so I'm touched on whether. Uh, we wanted to institute some type of, uh, user base system for certain, uh. Activities that are that are being done, that's called launch, uh, dive site, uh. You know, the galal area, and whether we want that sort of as a voluntary, uh, sort of donation style or or if if we get the feeling is that. It would be more of an indoor nature. So those are some of the items that we're looking into, but we do have. Uh, some some options in respect to what required or what would include I B S, maybe you know what you to to. Generating here, one of the other items that's known to me actually today that I didn't forget with respect to the, uh, forum bill on the website, we may have need moved. From this, that expand the citywide, uh, system. So there are some opportunities in in areas that we are looking into, which is, I don't have all the data. Respect to to the costing and paying implementation time, but it is something that we are. Look at. Bringing this forward a little earlier than 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 anticipated, just to. It is not, not we are like. Happy to, uh, to answer any, uh, any questions that that I mean, we have a line on this particular apartment. Uh, before, but it is, uh, ultimately limited in nature.
Uh, and, uh, thank you very much, Mr. C E O. I mean, I I think, uh, uh, that we should all just as well keep in mind, and I mean, not that we maybe did know a lot of this before, but I I, you know. Uh, the delegation basically really pointing out, uh, uh, traffic cleanliness and safety, I think, were their primary concerns that we're being addressed there. Uh, and, uh, you know, maybe it's new information to 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 staff or not, I'm not sure, but, you know, it it does sound like there's potentially some collaboration that happened there to help them. So, I mean, I think, uh. You know, we, uh, uh, you know, do ourselves a great disservice to try and do this something on our own anyways, but, uh. Uh, I can appreciate this and thank you very much, uh, on that, uh. Kim, I saw you raise your hand a second ago, so.
I was just going to say, you know, there's there's very few free things out there. And so, um, you know, having that waterfront where anybody can go. And and just enjoy it without having to be is is fantastic. Um, but it would be beneficial, I think. I like the idea of registration, even to getting people to slow down. Um, to stop at, um. At the site there where they sell hamburgers and hot dogs, whatever, to register before they go through or. I don't know, something so that we know how many visitors we are getting in there and where they're coming from and that kind of thing. I I like that idea. I also think that if we expanded, um, a bit of the program down there and started renting, um, kayaks or, um. paddleboards or that kind of thing, that could be a source of revenue and it would also, um, get people to. You know, to park and stop and spend some time down there and spend some money. And so I think there's a lot of development that could happen. Um. Where, you know, we could build some revenue, but in terms of the boat launch and things like that, I mean, I think it's an attraction just because. It is, it is a free, open. Site for people to come. That's just.
That's fair. Council Martel.
And you know, that's that's great. Thank you, sir. Well, I think I'm a pastor now.
we're not going to pass for now. Okay, welcome back to you and see if there could be any, uh, deputy mayor.
Uh, yeah, I guess, uh, you know how I feel about charging every towners and, uh, like we're saying that we're looking at different options and, and, uh, and this and that. Have we got any timetable on this, uh, did we chair to the CEO?
Uh, through the.
May is some efficiencies and so obviously.
So through, through the chair, he just gets, uh, the proposal back from the citywide for their models. We were in the process, we view that still, uh, uh, waiting for a route of information effectively with my mess.
So.
You know, I, I don't really, um, you know, I'm not information from the next, uh, maybe the next level. Like, then within next three or four weeks.
So possibly, possibly for next decade.
Like C D C?
Eventually next C D C or, hopefully any for, whatever, something.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Deputy?
Uh, no, I, I mean, I'm off for an option two week.
Okay, sir.
Uh, through the chair to the C O. Is there any, uh, timeline that you're gonna start making the parking lot for the boat launch bigger? Like, will it be done for fiscal season? And are, are employees doing it or are we contracting that?
So through the, through the chair, I think there is me, uh, we can get plans to expand that parking lot area, but it certainly is something that is getting, uh, who that, uh, as part of, uh, I, I have a job in plan.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think there's a duty on and off.
Okay, uh, gotcha. Mr. Doby?
I think we're, we're all in agreement that the waterfront, um, Cardinal is the draw to Cardinal right now. And, uh, listening to the, uh, figures that, uh, the lady from the dive sites, uh, gave us, uh, the businesses in Cardinal can't help but receiving some of that loose patch that's available, like the, 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 uh, uh, the restaurant, for example, the gas station, for example, I mean, they all have to be benefiting from, from the dive people. Um, I, I, I guess I agree with, uh, Mr. Dilma to be, uh, nice way, if there would be some way to generate revenue from not the extra Cardinal people, but people that are coming to the dive site. Uh, you know, they might better, you know, maybe give the kick out to a little bit of funding to funds to upgrade that road. Uh, and, uh, in the future, put in a better way of, of securing money from them. So, uh, I think it's great. I always thought that the dive site down there was twenty years ago, you know, that it was the, an up and coming feature of Cardinal. To me, it's the number one star attraction right there.
Okay, uh, I mean, I guess just to try to put my, my two cents, because, you know, if I sell them, don't. Um, but, uh, I, I mean, I, uh, uh, I almost like a bit of a graduated approach to this because, you know, I, I, I kind of like the idea of doing something along the lines of sort of, uh, option, option one, one slash two, uh, to get a feel for the data at this point in time. But I mean, I wouldn't mind actually at the same time, if you could, if it was possible to, like, to conduct some sort of a survey just to see just generally take while you're in town, you plan on buying gas, visiting restaurants, other business, things like that. Uh, because I, I think, you know, uh, I worry a little bit, and I mean, it, it could just be me. I know that sometimes I'm, when it happens. Uh, or I mean, I don't like paper parking, so, you know, sometimes I avoid areas like downtown Ottawa because I don't like a paper park. So I'd like to get a baseline ahead of time, if we could, uh, before we implement something. So I, I think if you had option one and two, you'd get that baseline and then contemplate, see what it looks like at the end of the year, then maybe for, uh, uh, for next year, be able to, uh, take a look at the information you have and see if it's supportive. But, uh, you know, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm one person, I guess, so, so that's my opinion, but. Uh, that's kind of where I would go, if it were up to me. So I don't know, uh, I know this is an information, uh, item, uh, uh, but I want to make sure that, that staff gets that information to, to proceed with what we're doing. So, you know, any other comments while we're, uh, getting to the podcast?
So just touching on something Mr. Doby said, uh, I actually, at the, at the onset of this diving debate, when I basically asked them, this, this, it means to dive me. And yeah, I do. I don't think they see as many divers as the, the Brockel study we saw tonight would indicate for that being said, but when a community does a study on itself, the numbers are usually pretty generous. So I don't, I wouldn't say those numbers they presented us are a hundred percent accurate. There's probably some truth there. I think we have an opportunity. We have, yes, most of the tourists have been coming into Cardinal, either drive it through the number two highway or they stopped at Leech and Way. So if we have most of the tourism coming down there, I think the opportunity we have on the site is to try to put something up that informs the people that are visiting of what is actually available in town, of something done tastefully. I'm not talking about, you know, twelve by eight billboards. That's a little over the edge, but, you know, maybe, uh, opportunity for, for local business to sponsor a a bench and put some information on there, even just, uh, a monitor at the at the, at team that say, you know, diving through this is today's special. I think he's, it's a scoring venue. It's like, it's so hard to sort out. I think we can do a better job of that. It's just, uh, a matter of marrying the tourists with, uh, the people that they serve to us.
I mean, even if it's, this falling of that, that's a great idea as far as, as concerned to, uh, but maybe it's even easier just to have some sort of a Q R standing, people can stand with their phones and, uh, uh, you know, things so that we can change things, change our time. And, uh, you know, because the women, they can use their cell phone. I know everybody has a cell phone, but, uh,
And they, you know, just, you know, a pamphlet, you could, a free pamphlet at the, the canteen there. They'll open up and it's like, oh, yeah, there's, there's a map of the town. There's, uh, you know, it's, uh, that hides well with, uh, we get tourists at the Red River, we have all the old cars and often have tourists that, you know, they go and they either go to the mill and then they come down to the yard or come to the yard. They go here. It's, it gives us an opportunity to tie all of our tourists and holistically with not just the, the canal and the waterfront and say, hey, why are you here? You should sit back, Spashville, have a burger, Joe's, check it at the mill. It's, uh, it gives us an opportunity to grow our tourism. It's something we should probably look at as tourism on a, as a whole, rather than just a pocket here or a pocket there.
Okay, anybody have anything else that's, okay, um, I, I mean, I know we touched on it a bit today as well. I, I wouldn't mind, uh, uh, seeing if there's, uh, there's anything there, um, with regards to a conversation with organizations like the Dive Shop, for instance, to, uh, to see if there's something that we can do where we, uh, engage, engage the users to try and make sure they're also doing a little bit of self, self maintenance in the area. So, uh, if you were asking me if there was a fourth one over that, that's the first one. But, uh, yeah, but otherwise, uh, I, I need to be more. I mean, I know we haven't really completely decided anything, but we also don't have often three really flash, you know, as far as, uh, cost and timeline either. So.
Uh, through the, through the chair, I think it will be to, uh, more of a discussion, uh, the, the next C D C. Details and costs of that.
Okay, listen, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Mr. Doby.
It, it might be beneficial to get a hold of Ms. Cooper, uh, and, uh, ask her a little bit more about the, the, the survey results and like what questions were asked, like maybe there was a question, like, do you use the Cardinal dive site, you know? Maybe she has some figures that pertain particularly to us in particularly, so. It might, uh, cut some of your work out, and that she has done.
All good questions. Good idea. Thank you very much. Okay, um, do we already have to go on then? All right, uh, so then moving on then to, uh, uh, to number, uh, seven, sorry. Get over here. Eight, six D, pardon, we got word sixty, uh, or your discussion on doors are. Um, so, uh, we're just over here. And we're done. You're the one from around the sport to talk about. And I've talked a bit about, um, just to refresh everybody's memory, uh, sort of, you know, potentially get more available, it's five hours and things like that. Uh, and if, whatever discussion on, on how it's, how it's going so far and what we, uh, what we're thinking. So, uh, I do want to start first.
Go through the chair, the, the comment I have made. Love the program, great idea, people can talk of the, the issues for having them during the origin hours. You know, eliminating the section beside of the population that's still on the workloads. Frankly, for, for the decent voters on council, we're curious, we'll get over her also.
Yeah, so, but I mean, then, I mean, to be, to be frank, I think we're not, uh, uh, you know, and it is, it is in its intensity. I understand that. Um, but it's, it's, it's not, uh, it's not flying off the shelves. So as being as a product at this point in time, we're having people who's in, it's not been, uh, uh, a full house or anything near that by my, uh, research imagination. So, right, I, I kind of get that and availability might be one of those issues.
Through the chair, do we have any numbers?
Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I feel like it's like one of five people so far visiting us.
Well, we've had, for instance, in Cardinal, we've had, uh, like, e- every week we've had somebody.
And we had the two, the first.
From Legion, then we had the gentleman of a delight.
Yeah, that was my, that's kind of thing. I think you planned that.
But we were there.
It's all why we were there.
We were there. Door is open, right? So brought his attention and sent us an email. So that worked. So, I mean, we had two here, I believe, here. So we've had four or five. I mean, and it's just getting out and, uh, I, I mean, you could, I mean, uh, as far as the evening, I, I'm not for it at all. I mean, if, if someone calls me and say, hey, Steve, I got an issue, instead of being open, can you come and meet me or come to my house? They're more than welcome to. So I'll take them one on one, but for me to say that I'm gonna do it at seven o'clock at night on a Friday night, not gonna happen. Not for me anyways, because we already set the schedule. And we want to kind of keep that role until people can understand when they're coming like from ten to eleven thirty, ten to eleven thirty. And here it's eleven thirty, the one. Um, we, we're on that, that, that basis and it helps the staff to, to coordinate on, on, uh, on the Facebook. I mean, that, that's my opinion. I mean, you, you, it's four years here, three years here, they have to go to, uh, uh, each meeting, but I, I, I'm not, I'm not going in the evening for sure unless someone calls me. Someone called me, I'm more than happy to go to their house or take some of mine. No issues. Could discuss whatever. So that's my feelings on that. That's, that's just me.
Councillor Dell? Well, I pretty don't want to quote on evenings because I'm pretty busy usually every night. So, but in the summertime, I'm bringing it home to my log at night. So I won't be available from the campsite. Yeah, no kidding.
Oh, through the chair, the other option for the weekend. Yeah, that's another one. You can do days during the weekend.
Yeah, you know, just a little, you know, because, yeah, fair enough. I mean, not, not everybody wants to, and, uh, and I get that. And I think it's, it's, I don't think there's one, one answer for everything. I know, uh, uh, I've had some discussion with, uh, you know, because I was, I was trying to figure out how we can get more, more happening here. I, because I would like to see it, uh, you know, I want it to be a tool where everybody can, can come forth and have this discussion with us. And, uh, to the deputy mayor's point, there's more than one way to do that, right? Reaching out to us directly. I mean, I have found, uh, you know, my share of phone calls as well and conversations, they can help out that way as well. And I think we're all making ourselves available where we can, you know, and one of the things that we did sort of talk about is, uh, since when I had a chat with, um, uh, the CDC when we were, uh, last week, we had, looking at each other and had a discussion is, you know, uh, is there any, is there any interest in sort of having, uh, uh, you know, a, uh, you know, uh, in, in various occasions, like, you know, within the fair zone or when there's a, uh, when there's an event out there somewhere that have, you know, a table with some sort of a, you know, a, a little display, whatever, kind of, hey, here, I'm a, apparently I'm a councillor and willing to talk to you. I mean, uh, I'd certainly be willing to sit for a few hours at the fair, so, wow, went back to my youth Spencerville fair and, uh, you know, have that conversation. And if that's case, then, you know, I, I think the, uh, the CDC had some good ideas on how she would try and help set something up so that it would attract people to come and talk to us whenever, whenever, in other words, we just know where the people are instead of having no time to have tests on a regular basis.
Yes, through the chair and the CDC coordinator, does that happen now? We, we set up, uh, the, the, a couple of weeks ago, the residents come up and say, hey, I've got this issue.
Um, yeah, I think we certainly have more of the interaction at the, at the pre-show than, than what we're seeing now, like the, like the doors are open and that's, it's, um, people are, and this is a lot of traffic that you can find. A lot of ideas were generated, um, by the residents that's got out, but also by the business owners that were actually shown as well.
Yes, I like that idea. It's, uh, asking people to come to us for the link to where people actually are. It takes the illness off of them and puts it back on us, which would be.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, I, I think that's an option. It's an option either, because I don't want to be in the office at the fair anyways, for sure. I spent two days in there these days. And, uh, so, I mean, I really did hope that, and I, and I appreciate, uh, the deputy mayor's point that not everybody, you know, we all have different schedules, right? So, uh, you know, mine is a little more difficult during the weekday, but on the weekends, right, I can find time to help. You know, really thinking game, it's important. So, uh, Councillor Dell?
All I know is, uh, when I go for walks every day, I'm always being stopped by people complaining about everything. So, like, we're always there walking around.
Okay, so a new plan is we're just gonna get answers to their own watch. Just stuff that I know. Thank you very much. So I, I don't know. I mean, I, I feel like I'd like to see if we can take a look to see what we can do on that effort. But, uh, I mean, you know, I always want to have, can't have, uh, uh, the committee make sure that we're all on board to see if they'll have, uh, the CDC pursue a little bit of, uh, a, I don't want to call it a booth investigation, but something like that. So, uh, Mr. Mark, are you okay with that? It sounds like?
Yeah, great. Mr. Deputy Mayor? Yeah, I'm out of, but yeah, I agree. Yeah, I'm for it.
Does that give you, uh, some direction there? Looks like we have, uh, you know, council members or, uh, early in towards see if we can set something up to bring to the shows, bring to various, uh, events.
More in a couple of weeks.
To compare the, um, the, the, some of the, you know, the, we have discussed.
Exactly. Some sort of a, you know, I know you talked about some sort of a easy to move, but comfortable chairs, sort of, to sit down and talk to people side by side and have a dialogue.
Could think of like a confessional.
Right. Really not important. And I'll have to be honest, because I've missed so many events because I don't know they happen until after they happen. So, like, oh, yeah. Um, Mr. CDC, Mr. CDC, would you say, oh, you have a, I'm, I'm missing something or I need to explain.
Nope, okay. No, no, Mr. Chair, I was, I, I, I heard the, uh, complaints, but. There's open ones, uh, ideas and concepts and say, lots of engagement. And, and that there are, uh, concern based in, in wherever possible, uh, direct them to our website to be of course a concern. And, and of it, so that they can be quickly, you know, drawn down, get there and actually be directed to the, to the, to the appropriate departments. So then there can be, yes, the time when they follow up. But, uh, I'm a little way bigger than, uh, to, to. Not saying, yeah, they don't really concern, but we will give, give them some good information just to the one that more information than we are with respect to that contact information and the actual issue when it gets into the system, do we want to have these? We are better.
Yeah, that's, and that's a very good point. We, we did set up doors are open, not to hear necessarily complaints of the area, but they'll try to be proactive, try and help report, uh, uh, community, uh, community initiatives and see how we can, how we can get those going and then have, have the township support, you know, community groups on, on, trying to accomplish some of those, right? So, uh, a very good point. And in the, but on the other side of the, you mentioned, which is very important. And I have had several people, you know, uh, go towards that is on our website. And I'm now speaking to people who watch the video, whoever that may be, uh, there is, there is a nice button on there called, I think it's report a fault, you said, that, that, it's reported concern. And, uh, basically it sets up a, uh, a, a work order ticket for, uh, for, uh, township staff to take a look at and, uh, see how they can address your concern, most pointed to the right person who would be dealing with their department, who would deal with that concern for you. So, there you go. There's one. Free, free blood. Okay. All right. Uh, anything else on, on this one then, everybody? Think they gave direction, uh, uh, to the CDC to, to, you know, use for creative, uh, find to, uh, help come up with something here. Yeah, exactly. Okay. Thank you very much. That's good. Uh, all right. So, uh, moving on to number seven. Inquiries and notices of motion. Anybody have any, yeah, Kim?
I have a couple of things that I'm gonna ask to bear with me a little bit because um. This is my first time presenting anything and I wanted to bring it up last meeting, but I was sick. Um, one of the things I wanted to talk about is recruitment and retention of family physicians. Nurse practitioners in a medical facility for Edford's Burg Cardinal Township. Um, now, uh federal government has recently put forth a lot of money on the table for provinces. Help address the shortages of family physicians and medical staff in communities. And to tackle some specific gaps in services, upgrade medical technology systems, and address the backlog created by the pandemic. Every level of government, I think, has a role to play in this process, and I think um, you know, trying to figure out what. Role of government, what responsibility each role of government plays is often a, um, a topic of discussion, but at this particular level. Um in the process, I think it's the responsibility um of the municipalities to help address the shortages. By um looking at the data or developing some form of collecting data. Um, how many of our residents have family doctors? How many of our residents um don't have family doctors, where are they going to get their health care needs met? Um, so um, in saying that, uh what I'm proposing. Is um to develop a survey that's available online and at specific locations in the township for the purpose of identifying the medical service needs of every house. Household in our um township.
Okay.
And um I think that's a good place to start.
Yeah, and, and fair enough, and I, so I'm gonna reach out to the CEO because he's sort of an expert on this side of it. Sorry, I'm sorry, 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 I, I say this differently, the expert on, uh I mean, it's such, we're in such a difficult situation, as we're sort of a uh. A, a, a third tier municipality, right, so uh the, the municipality, the, I believe anyways, that the county has handled a lot of this discussion, including. Things around that, um but I do know that we are uh trying to get an update soon from the tri-council, from the tri-council, so that's addressed to press gardeners. Uh on recent work they're doing to try and uh, for recruitment of physicians, but I think I'll leave it to the CEO and sort of answer to the rest of that.
I, I think, sure, I, I was just going to acknowledge that usually the inquiries and notice of caution would be that. Like the reason that we're moving the tension as a, as a discussion.
For the next, for the next meeting.
So, okay. Put that in.
Okay.
You know, and then the, exactly, and I mean, I, I say for the next meeting, I think we have to, the data looks like, so it might take a meeting or two, or three, and. Questions, we, we all agree on that.
Okay, so any information or questions that I do have, please do like or.
No, it's, it's, so I think you did the right thing by bringing it forward here, so, so this brings up, this brings the, you've been an inquiry now, and so now what will happen is. We put that back to staff to do the investigation, trying to uh bring it to port to us as a discussion potentially now, so. But I think you did the right thing, I mean, I, you know, uh as what we're trying to say is that we just have to direct staff with your inquiry to get some information for us. Isn't that right?
Yes. Typically, the discussion that they place at same meeting.
Right, yes, okay, so we could have made that a luxury. Fair enough, so, right, so we have a lot of context, probably. Yeah, so, so, you know, you have none of this as well, so I think what we're trying to say is that, you know, um there's some context that probably don't need to put through and you can just talk about the, the degree of people. In other words, what's the end statement that you're trying to find and uh. Uh let's see, you see what the difference from that point, so, you know, I'm not sure what the next one is, let's just try and see what happens, but. I'm just saying that, you know, we don't need necessarily some of the, the, the setting up the conversations, just more, can you look into something for us? Because, you know, I went requiring a band, you know, doctors and recruitment and uh, you know, what the market, you know, looks like. I think that's, maybe not. Okay. We'll, we'll go through it.
Awesome, very curious through them. Um, the other, um, okay, so um agenda I, that I want to get on the agenda for next uh meeting is the re-establishment of the Cardinal Community Garden. Um. Uh we've had an initial meeting, um we're in the process of developing something called Seaway Horticulture Society in this area, I thought in Tuesday group of people. Um, got an initial dates, and so I wanted to bring that up and maybe do a little presentation. Because we would like to um ask council for some support.
In the, okay, so again, asking for delegation, that we certainly.
So the next meeting, right?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, but I, I think you might find me have that conversation, might be other, other meetings you can get to get some of this as well, but, but that's a current discussion, I guess, right, so. Um, did I miss anything there with the arrow or Mr. Dilly? Okay, so, like I said, I think, let's, so uh, so you, you want to bring a delegation essentially forward yourself, or do you have people who would bring it forward for you?
I guess it would be. And there might be some law and it's not complex.
Is, and that gets complicated, can we have a delegation by a member of the committee?
Should through the chair. Um, usually if there's a, a group, um usually someone inside of the community that involved that specifically, you do it's not either a conflict and. You are a non-voting member, but you can be on those tables, so it's a way to definitely. And you have come potentially, okay, so I do recommend that on the office that, you know, sitting on the committee. You delegate it and then you down box it, so it didn't get any financial or anything uh.
Yeah, and, and just, is it, but that's all right.
I can ask somebody.
Okay, I was gonna say, I'm, I'm not sure if it's another avenue, but if that doesn't work, eighty percent, and then excuse ourselves for a community area, Chris, and a community area, but.
After the way of uh, um, the reason that that nature is that you also make sure that there is a lot of division. Thank you very much, good.
So there you go, okay, an idea of thirty years.
Yeah, that's okay.
Great, all right, thank you very much, uh Mr. Martell, now she for both one, did she? Can't wait to see you in their garden. It's true, Deputy Mayor?
No, I'm good, okay. Uh, this is Bill, Mr. Dilly?
And I believe I am good as well, uh all right, so uh. We were doing well, I thought we were gonna get a question, but uh people have seemed to have disappeared over the meeting, so we're now down to zero people in the audience, so we know question period. Uh all right, so uh moving on to number nine, closed session, uh there is no closed session tonight, so number ten, the adjournment. Any to mover? No. Moved by the deputy mayor, Stephen Hill, seconded by Councilor Waddy's mail, all in favor? Okay, I call this meeting to a close.